...to order, Mrs. Sander, will you call the roll please?
Mr. Gambiani?
Here.
Mrs. Intihar?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Mr. Knitter?
Here.
Mr. Broman?
Here.
Mrs. Kikehl?
Here.
Mrs. Swanson?
Here.
And, uh, Mr. Wilkie, would you mind leaving us on the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now we need a motion to suspend the rules. So moved by Barb, second by Andy. Can you go call any session on this? Yes, we do. Mrs. Intihar?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Kikehl?
Yes.
Mr. Broman?
Yes.
Mr. Gambiani?
Yes.
Mr. Knitter?
Yes.
Mrs. Swanson?
Yes, we are now in workshop session and I believe we have three main topics tonight. And I'll turn it over to you, Dr. Harris.
Thank you, Mrs. Swanson. Good evening, board members and staff. Tonight, we are going to be focusing on facilities in general. But before we get into our topic of discussion, I just want to bring to your attention there in front of you, first, a sheet of paper and also a brick with a plate on it. Those bricks were successfully recovered from the rubble over on the corner of Main and Naperville Road.
Did Mr. Farley offer this?
Well, I think he delegated that responsibility to staff. Is that a fair way to put it? That's right. Our, uh, staff did go over and collect a lot of bricks and, uh, so we are going to distribute them to the community. I'm going to let Erica talk a little bit about that here in a minute. She's been working collaboratively with Mr. Wilkie and they've got a whole plan put together. So just kind of an FYI, so, uh, board's aware of what we're doing here. And, uh, but each of you have a brick there with a plate on it and I'll let her talk about that. Erica.
Well, this has certainly been a fun project. It brings, uh, new meaning to the, uh, part in the job description that says other duty does not. We have received, uh, starting about two weeks ago, we formally started taking requests for the bricks. Um, and, uh, we've received requests for close to 700 bricks now. Um, and, uh, we contacted everyone on Monday to let, who had previously requested a brick to let them know, um, about the upcoming sales. Um, and we contacted the local papers as well so that they could further communicate to the community, um, our intent for public sale. Uh, so the first of those two sales will be this Thursday from 3:30 to 5:30. And the second will be next Thursday from 4:00 to 6:00 at the DuPage County Fairgrounds in the west parking lot. Look for the white, uh, District 200 truck. We're keeping it classy. But, uh, been working with Colin and the facilities team to get a, uh, we have a well-oiled plan, uh, that we should, we're looking forward to a smooth and organized sale. We purchased the plaques that are attached to the bricks from the Sign Authority, local Wheaton Company, um, and had those made. The plaques are, cost us $15 each, so that's what we're selling the plaques for. The plain bricks will be sold for $5 and that $5 is really to help us at best to come out cost neutral on this. Um, in addition to, you know, adhering the plaque to the brick, uh, you know, that $5 really just covers, um, hopes to help us cover staff time and retrieving the bricks because the company had really, um, uh, they allow us to come in and take the bricks, but they are really in a pile of trash and staff has to sort through the trash, broken bricks, mortar, to find these good bricks that, and these are the best of the best that you have right in front of you. Um, so they spent a lot, countless hours sifting through and piling up bricks, shuffling them down to Woodland, and then we shuffle them back out to, uh, the fairgrounds on Thursday to sell to the community. So we're excited about it, um, and looking forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you, Erica. And, uh, yeah, it is an interesting project, to say the least, and it's kind of that capstone of the whole, uh, series of things over a 10-year period. So, um, so please make sure you take it with you this evening as a memento of, uh, time in District 200. So, um, any questions about that before we move on? So it was just kind of a little side thing. I thought it was fitting here for this evening. Okay. If you do have, you know, if anybody's, anybody asking the community, certainly have them call Erica, get in contact with her and she can, uh, help them out. Okay. Um, we are this evening focused on three major topics and all, uh, dealing with facilities. Uh, the first one this evening is about, uh, an update and a review of our energy education program. Um, a few years back, um, those of you on the board at that time, remember we entered into our contract, uh, to improve our energy savings in the district. And there was an initial cost involved and now we are sunsetting on that cost. And so, uh, we felt like it was an appropriate time to, um, uh, come full circle on this and share the long-term results of where we're at with that project. Um, so at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Farley and let him fill in some of the blanks and then we've got a presentation here this evening on that.
Thank you, Dr. Harris. Uh, you covered it very well. Uh, this is the end of the contract with, uh, the payment portion of the energy education contract. As the board may recall, uh, the contract, while it ends, we still, uh, have the access to, to software that we've been using as well as, uh, professional development opportunities through energy education. And Colin's going to talk a little bit about that here in a second, but I, it, it isn't really an end to our mission as far as educating and, and conserving energy to the best of our ability. Colin, as you all know, has been, uh, the strong advocate for the school district in his role and will continue to do so, uh, along with his role in facility services department. So we're really looking forward to this being, uh, while it is a milestone where the contract is expiring from a financial standpoint, uh, for the district, uh, the energy savings, uh, march will go on. So, uh, Colin's here to talk a little bit today about the, uh, this milestone and where we've been and where we're going and, uh, has put together a presentation for you. So with that, I'll turn it over to him.
As Colin steps up here, the, I just want to reiterate Mr. Farley, um, comments about, uh, that Colin Wilkie has been the leader in this program, this district, since we began it several years ago. And, and I tell people when they call me about this, there's no way we would, you're going to be looking at some data here and some results. There's no way this would be happening without his leadership. He has been presenting, uh, on behalf of District 200, a lot of national conferences and so on. So, you know, we are proud of the work that's been going on here and I think a lot of our districts are very intrigued about what, how we've done things. And so I'll, uh, turn it over to him.
All right. Very good. You can all hear me. I don't need to use the mic. I've got one of those voices. Uh, it's hard to believe in two months, we will be at our four-year, um, use of the energy program. We started out in 2009. Now, most of you remember in 2009, we had two Hubble's. We now have one. In 2009, they introduced the iPhone 3 GP. Now we're on the iPhone 5. And they had introduced the iPad in 2010. Now we're on the iPad Mini, which was just talked about yesterday. So things have moved on, but it's kind of quick that we've gone through so far, an energy program which has been pretty successful. Uh, as Bill had related to, uh, we complete our contract on December 31st, 2012, and then after that, the company no longer asks for payment. We, we sunset and we can use those funds for other things. So we'll show you in a minute, the chart. Uh, energy education, however, has also changed. It is no longer known as energy education. Uh, as Dr. Harris was saying, I came forward to do a presentation at their national convention, which was, uh, last week. And all of a sudden, they said, "No, no, no, no energy education. You've got to change your entire PowerPoint because we're now Synergistic." I said, "Okay." So the reason that they changed is they're looking at a new audience for their energy savings. They've been a K through 12, uh, power player for decades now, almost 30 years, and now they're looking to go into healthcare and stuff of that nature. So they wanted a new image. Company is exactly the same. We've got the same people in place that have trained and gone ahead and helped us with all of our energy savings, so that won't change. Energy Cap at the top is the software we use. Uh, you should have one of the Energy Cap programs for the paper that had pie chart on it for him?
I didn't have anything, no.
All right. We can create reports and do different things with the information we have over the four years. So I can tell you exactly how much money we spent at Hubble on Thursday, the 21st. So that gives us a real idea where we can laser down and get information, real-time information from the buildings that helps us a lot. This is basically, I don't know how well you can see it, what we've paid out to Synergistic over the last four years and how much savings that we've gained. Uh, right now, we're at about $3.1 million worth of saving over the course of the last four years. But what that means is we've cut ourselves about a 25% savings, real budget savings in our electric, our gas, and our water. Now, we've got some things that are coming up that are going to add to our costs. Water, as you well know, if you live in either Wheaton, Warrenville, or Winfield, has gone up dramatically over the course of the last several months. We've increased about 28, we're going up to about 34% by the end of the year. And those payments will be reflected, but we're trying again to make sure the usage is less, not necessarily the average unit cost. And you can see that we're hoping to rise all the way through the 10-year period and beyond. Uh, as Bill said, this program is ongoing. We're not going to stop because we're out of contract. We're going to continue to move forward and save money on the district and education. Okay, why did we drop so much after 2010? Well, today's a perfect example. If you walk outside, it doesn't feel like the beginning of November. We're getting weird swings in our weather situation. We've had heatwaves, we've had blizzards, all within the course of the last few years. Uh, the other issues that we're having is that we've got additional summer school programs, we're doing more events at the high schools, and that's not bad things. We're just adding to where that 2008 day year was at. And of course, we're looking at management systems, energy management systems, computers that control the information becoming obsolete. Uh, if you look down at the little picture at the very bottom there, you see the computer and right next to it is the printer that we use for that computer. It's a dot matrix printer. So that kind of gives you the idea of how old some of these systems are. They date 20 years out, 15 years out. Uh, you've got to go on eBay to get parts for them. Energy program cost benefits. Well, the biggest one is probably the dollar amount for the district, but it's not the only one. As I said before, we're saving about $3.1 million. Uh, we're looking at going ahead and tracking all energy costs through Energy Cap. Uh, we found also that by tracking the costs, we have kind of caught some of the people that are in the utilities a little off-guard because we do have such accurate records. We have recouped about $45,000 from misapplied bills. Some of that's from the high schools, some of that's from middle schools, and a very small amount is from the elementary. But again, we're able to say, "Okay, if you're telling us this is the bill, this is the information we have, please prove to us that that's the actual utility bill." You'd be surprised how often that is not the case where they, they really can't do that. Uh, the biggest instance was at South High School. We were told that we were having accurate meter readings and we found out later that they were estimated and we recouped about $20,000 from that at that point.
So Colin, for people who weren't on the board at the time, can you just say a little bit about what E-CAP is and how that?
Energy Cap is a software package. It's used by most government, uh, entities. Uh, it's used by the EPA, it's used by military. It is a database that puts in the utility costs directly from a building, then takes a look at square footage, and takes a look at weather, and adjusts for those 55-degree days, over 55-degree days under. And it gives you an accurate measurement of how much the building should be using as hard as energy sources. What we try to do is when we bring down the electric costs and the gas costs, that's directly related to how that information then is retrieved. So we can actually show, and Bill will attest to this, that the budget has actually dropped because we don't spend as much for those utilities anymore. When we started, we were about $3.5 million. We're down below $2.5 million right now for total utilities. So it's a pretty dramatic drop in the course of the last four years. And of course, the savings, what we're looking to do is roll those back into education programs to go ahead and use that to update some of our energy management systems, which sorely needed. And then again, we can go ahead and use that for lighting, which is what we call low-hanging fruit. And we've done that, uh, you'll hear at one of the high schools, but we still need to do that in some of the gyms and other areas throughout the districts for the elementary. Well, besides the cost benefits, we have environmental benefits. Uh, reduction in energy use by 25% from January 2009 to August of 2012, we still have outstanding bills for September, has been about 25.53% as of this morning. Not that I'm checking or anything. Uh, what that means is again, is that we're using about a quarter less of the energy, which means there's a huge reduction on the greenhouse gases that we put out. And we are far greener now than we were in 2008. To give you an idea, that's about 20,000 equivalent tons of CO2. So think of one of those factories that's belching out, you know, the gases. We have taken off the road over 3,719 cars and parked them for an entire year during the course of the program. So we could take part of Roosevelt Road, park it, we wouldn't have to worry about it anymore. Probably make a lot of people happy doing that. The other thing that we have done is that we've gone ahead and been a good steward of the taxpayers' dollars. Uh, because of the utility costs going down, again, we can put that back into education programs, but we're also recognized at a national level. One of the things I did with communication at the training conference that I was just at was to do a large presentation on Energy Star. Energy Star, how many of you know, is the way the EPA looks at an energy-saving school. And only the top 25% in the nation can achieve Energy Star status. But we've done one better. We've gone ahead and we've gotten every single building that can qualify for Energy Star status at that level. We've done it not one year, not two years, but for the third year straight. And because we've done that, we have gotten two awards, which I'd like to present to the board today. The first award is the Energy Star 2012 Community Unit School District Leadership in Reducing Greenhouse Gas Emissions. And again, we've done that by 20% over the course of the last four years. So I would like to present this to the president.
Gosh, thank you, sir.
Thank you, but that's not all. Because every single one of our buildings is Energy Star, and that's a rarity. In Illinois, we have 20 buildings that are Energy Star. We also got the Top Performers Award for this year as well. So here is another award to hang up at the SSE.
Thank you.
Thank you. And that being said, and seen all the smiling faces on, on the screen behind us, Stephanie, uh, I will go and say thank you very much for the presentation. And do you have any questions at this time?
I have a question, but I do have a comment. I first met Colin many years ago at Johnson School, where he was thoroughly entrenched in some other types of environmental issues.
Well said.
But you could tell the passion and for the overarching elements of it were always there. And you just must be terribly proud of yourself. You should take some pride in that because you've done a lot of this hammering on people and continuing getting the message out. So you can be very, very proud of what you've done here.
The great thing is that this team that we have, without a Bill, without Tom, without Erica, the word wouldn't get out. And we wouldn't be quite as successful as we are right now. And people are the ones that do it. I mean, we, we can make suggestions, but it's the willpower of the staff, students, and even the stakeholders because, uh, we have reshuffled part districts and they're much better now than they, they used to be.
And to Dr. Drury's credit, he brought this to us when he came on board and inspired you to take the reins to that, so you did a fantastic job. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Colin, as a retired lawyer and one who practiced environmental law for over 25 years, this is wonderful. I really applaud you for it. And what I thought was wonderful was last year when we implemented environmental science courses at our high school, um, this, this year. Is there some way that we can incorporate Colin and his work into one of the classes or at least make a presentation to these classes, both at the south and north? Because, um, this is actually working. This is in their neighborhood. This is something they can act, see, feel, and hear about.
This little guy over here I invented, his name is WhatsApp. He's an energy bear. And he's got a little t-shirt that's made that says, "Barely Use Energy." I know, I'm looking for some patents and making, he's going to be a nice hairbrush. But, uh, what we're trying to do is, at the elementary school, I have a couple very interested parties right here at Whittier. I've got, uh, Carol King and some other people. So we, we bring WhatsApp and he does a bear blog. If you want to go online, I don't know how many of you have been online to look at the energy, but he does a bear blog, but it's old and I've got to update it.
Does he tweet?
Uh, well, he just says that, you know, I've just met with, you know, he's sitting in Dr. Harris's chair, and he's meeting Dr. Rammer, and you wouldn't believe how hard it was to get Dr. Rammer to hold WhatsApp next to him. But that being said, he was a good sport and, again, what we try to do is we're trying to foster this at the elementary. The high schools are great. We've, we've got a lot of dedicated people out there that are doing a lot of cool things, but I'd be more than happy to speak or try to do what we can.
I don't know how, whether high school kids will embrace WhatsApp, but...
No. Kind of disappears after fifth grade. Even the fifth graders are looking like, "What?" Maybe about third grade is where we cut them off.
You know what? Jim, that's actually a very good point. And I think one of the things that Colin and I and Bill have had discussions about, and, and this is, it's what's the next step? Uh, because, you know, obviously for the last four years or so, it's been about correcting people's behavior. It's, it's staff and students and then also the guests that they're going to. And so, um, now it's like, okay, now that we've pretty much changed the culture and, and adjusted that, it's about what's next. You know, or how do we continue to build an efficiency, an energy-efficient culture within our classrooms and, and that generational component? I do think our kids today are much more in tune with all this, uh, just because of the nature of where we're at and where we're headed. And they're a big part of it. I mean, we have 14,000 kids every day in the buildings and if they're not engaged in this, they, sometimes they don't know it. I know we have some students here this evening. Uh, they may or may not be aware of some of these things, but it is a big deal and it is a huge component that we can take these dollars and shift them out of ONM and into the e-fund to be able to make sure we've got things appropriately going into the classroom. So you, you hit the nail on the head. The key is, is what, now what do we do next? And with this program and how it moves forward. So that is the next steps away from the operational stuff and into the educational component.
You know, when we, um, were voting on this, I have to say, I was slightly skeptical. I mean, it sounded like a great idea. I supported it and everything, but, you know, it's one of those things that always sounds too good to be true. And so you're kind of thinking, well, you know, and, and as I understood at the time, the idea was simply to decrease the amount of increase, but it sounds like you're telling me we've actually literally decreased, so...
We have, budget-wise, we've actually cut the budget substantially.
Yeah, so, I mean, that is beyond what I certainly was led to expect could happen. And I'm just thrilled and thrilled with your leadership on it. And I guess I, I really am going to be interested to know what do we do in the future? And what, I understand we have an ongoing relationship with now, um...
Synergistic.
Synergistic?
Synergistic.
Synergistic, okay. I understand we have an ongoing relationship with them, but what is the nature of that relationship?
Relationship at this point is that we, we, me, Bill, myself, Tom, even board members, can attend the training conferences. The training conferences are great because of the last one, which was in Nashville. There's one coming up in Chicago during the summer. There's a wealth of different districts and some of these districts are college districts where they've got 52 buildings. Uh, some of them are much smaller districts, but you share information, you take a look at data, you, you look at different things, and you meet the people. The networking is a very important part of the energy savings because you don't have to reinvent a wheel each time. Somebody's probably come up with it. I don't know how many of you have, have seen that I send out these wonderful poems and music and stuff. I got that from them. You know, I, I can't say, I didn't steal the lyrics, I made up the lyrics myself. But would it have occurred to me to do that sort of thing without input from another source? Probably not. Uh, the other thing that we do is we've got Energy Cap, which we go ahead and will be able to use. Uh, there's a licensing fee on that. I think it's well worth it. Uh, the big cost was that first year that you saw that big yellow line going up. And if you're wondering what the little yellow lines were after that, that's me. So, that's my cost to the district. So right now, there's really no additional cost. And if I do get into a, a problem or an issue, uh, Bill Chetister has been very dynamic. He is one of the few, uh, energy certified, Energy Star certified engineers in the country. He will physically come out and help me each year with the Energy Star certification and, uh, he can come out for me again. So we do have that access to their people, to their resources, and, uh, most importantly, to the, the entire, I, it's, it's a culture. It really is. I mean, when, when I'm with those people, it's really cool. We kind of feed off of each other.
I think also, and that's a great point, it's the professional development and the access to the software. And it's also that connection for the, the energy conservation. And that's going to continually evolve. You listen to the presidential debates, they're talking about it all the time, you know? That type of thing is continuing to evolve and I think as long as we are able to stay connected to one of the key companies and if they're expanding their networks, it's even going to be more of, uh, an opportunity for us to continue to stay out in front of that. We don't want it to dwindle. We want to make sure we stay out there with it. Any other questions? Well, thank you very much for your patience.
Well done.
Now, as a perfect segue into the next topic, uh, one of the other questions is, how do we continue to, um, take a look at our energy costs? And if you remember the discussion we had at length about, it boils down to the equipment. Um, and we, we have to continue to start to look at our, our light fixtures, our HVAC equipment, um, and so on to, to make that next big jump. We made a big jump from, in 2009. Now, the equipment component is another big jump. Uh, and that's where the next step in this, as Colin even mentioned briefly, you know, one of the challenges we have, we couldn't get any better there, uh, is because our, some of our tools that we have in front of us just aren't appropriate. And, uh, so therefore, uh, that's why we stepped into the performance contracting to be able to start to address some of these mechanical pieces, um, at, at our schools. And if you recall, uh, we jumped into three schools and I'm going to let Mr. Farley talk a little bit about where we're at with that. And I know we have the staff here from Performance Services that are going to give an update on, uh, the work that's been done here over the last few months.
Thank you, Dr. Harris. Again, it is a great segue into, into this as Colin mentioned in his program, uh, you know, some of the equipment obsolescence is an issue in our district and, uh, and this is a great segue. Um, you know, as we mentioned, the energy education contract ended in, is ending in December and that payment's ending. We've kind of filled in our other purchase services, uh, budget this year with, uh, the first payment that's going towards what we're doing now in the three schools and, uh, and ongoing, we're able to keep that budget line item flat, uh, with the, uh, payments to pay off this, uh, through the lease, uh, that we set up in July when we did this. And, and as I mentioned, uh, July was when we approved this and, uh, Mr. Broman even mentioned the process of going through the performance contract and as we talked about in others, RFP were getting ready to put out. Um, so it's still fresh in his memory. I know it was a long process, but we wanted to get, uh, Performance Services out in front of the board here and kind of give you an update of where we're at and the process. And, uh, we did get a very late start and gave them a very late start in July and they've performed very well for us and I want to, you know, give them a chance. John Robinson's here, uh, he's our local contact with his boss. Bob Weedy is here to, uh, present today, uh, on where we're at and kind of give an update to the board so you know where we're at.
Thank you very much. And I'm Bob Weedy. I have with me some team members. John Robinson's our general manager here in Chicago. And then we have Mike McCann's our project manager and Brian Unniak is our energy engineer. So if you have any questions, please feel free to ask. It's a tough act to follow, I must say, but it is, it is a great segue. Um, as I, as Bill mentioned... We're looking at, we looked at three buildings to start with. Wheaton North, Franklin Middle School, and Lowell Elementary. And we looked at them from an energy standpoint and as well as taking a look at some learning environment issues. Um, so I want to take a minute here and what we're going to, what we're going to briefly go through is a project history, timeline, go over the scope, the results of the project, benefits of the project, and propose next steps. And then, like I said, if you have any questions, feel, please feel free to ask either now or at the end. Project history. Back in March, we submitted a proposal, as did several other firms. July 18th, you gave us a contract for $1.4 million. We immediately started work on that project. I believe our lighting was done, or almost done, by the start of school, and we are on track to be completed with the project by the end of November, which is about a month ahead of schedule where we plan to have it done. It has been great working with your team. I must say that they've really worked well with Colin and Tom and his whole team. It really has been a pleasure and heard nothing but good things from, from everybody here. The scope of the work that we looked at, we installed some high-efficiency lights at the high school. At each school, we installed a high-efficiency boiler. One of the things to improve the learning environment, we installed some fan-powered relief, and then we upgraded and modified your digital control system. Lighting. So, this is a picture of your gym, some of the key points of the lighting. Right now, we're working with Bill on incentives for, from the utility company that, for about $103,000 that you'll be getting a check back for. The lighting has been installed, and we're looking at, I think it's about $760 a week that you're saving on these, on these lights. And we were talking as a group, and Mike McCann brought up that, when we were doing the gym, we got about halfway done the first day, or...
About a third.
About a third of the way done. And the next morning, the volleyball coach came running up to her saying, "I need to have the rest of these lights put in here, because I have a volleyball tournament coming up, and there's such a light differential. These are really good, and these are icky and old, and so what are you going to do about that?" Because I don't think she realized that they were all going to get replaced, and sure enough, they were. But there's a noticeable difference in terms of the light level at school, and I think we've had several people mention it, Colin?
Yeah, the light levels are great. I was just out at North today, talking to the coaches, and they're extremely happy. There's two benefits besides the lumens being higher and the cost being down. The other thing is, the old ones, you turn them on, you'd have to wait for about 10 minutes before they would heat up enough that you'd actually have light out of them. So now they don't have excuses not to turn them off when they leave the rooms.
You know, I don't know if the rest of the board can see this, but I'm seeing Wheaton North students lighting.
Next thing we worked on, we put high-efficiency boilers, one boiler in each one of the buildings. What's interesting about that is, a boiler of that size should be able to run your high school probably eight to nine months out of the year. It's, it's a 2 million BTU boiler, it's, it'll average about 93% efficient. I don't know if you can see the big boiler, the big blue boiler in the background there? That's seasonal efficiency. Because it's so big, it ends up running on and off and purging itself, is probably in the upper 60s, lower 70s in terms of energy efficiency. One of the nice things about that also is you have a utility rebate coming that's going to be about $21,000. So you're going to get some nice checks back from the utility companies. It's going to be energy efficient, and another benefit, it'll help improve the learning environment. Those big boilers produce water temperature that's about 140 to 160 degrees. So on a day like maybe yesterday, when you needed a little bit of heat, in the old days, you'd be running one of those boilers, and it would circulate that really hot water, and by mid-morning, it would cook some rooms. The way these run is based on outside air temperature, so they can turn down, all the way down to 80 or 90 degrees, and just provide enough cooling, or enough heating to take the edge off, but then still be able to run your chillers later in the afternoon should you decide to do that. So, you would get energy savings, plus you improve the learning environment with this project. Fan-powered relief, one of the things we noticed when we walked the buildings back last year was that you had some rooms, especially your unit ventilator rooms, that had higher CO2, carbon dioxide levels than what you'd like to have. You had readings of about 2,000 parts per million. What you'd like to see is somewhere around 1,000, 1,100 parts per million. That was because of the design of the system. So what we have put in is install our fan-powered relief that actually draws the air out of the building. Now, it's computerized, so that it basically sums up the amount of air that each room is asking for, and then draws that amount of air out. I think probably the best example I can give is, I grew up not too far down the road from here, and in the summers, we didn't have air conditioning. So when I, when I was young, we used to put a box fan, my brother and I, in the window, and we'd turn it on, and it never seemed to get that cool, the breeze was okay. And the reason was, because the air was coming in, but there was no place for the air to go out. And my dad installed an attic fan, we got a nice breeze going. So that's really what this can do. It brings in the CO2, it brings in fresh air, so that it can lower the CO2, but it can also help on days like today and yesterday, where you've shut down your chillers for the season, so, but I still want to be able to bring in fresh air and get that ventilation. I think if you go through those rooms, you'll notice that they, just your sniff test will tell you that they smell better. We've also gone through, are we on our third set of readings, Brian? Second?
Second set.
Second set of readings, Mike? And CO2 levels are consistently around 900 to 1,100 parts per million, which is exactly where you want them to be. The last thing that we're working on is building controls. Building controls are the brains of the system, and as Colin mentioned, you have some really old brains in some of your buildings. You said eBay? I don't know about that. We're looking under rocks for some of those parts, and they're challenging, but, and that's, that's an example of one of the older systems on the left. This is an architectural layout, and what I want to point out is the upper right-hand corner. What we've done in each one of the three buildings is upgraded that so that they are web-based, so that your team can access information and the systems via any internet access, whether that's a computer at home, a laptop, or a smartphone. And then we are working our way through on replacing some of the antiquated equipment and upgrading areas where we can. It's a first step. Everything we're putting in is what we call open protocols, so in other words, it's not proprietary. What that means is you're not locked into any one company. If, in this case, it's Allerton, if they go out of business, we could put in, there's probably three or four other products that would match that and work well with it. That's just our philosophy, we like to give you that flexibility. So on the building controls, they're the brains of the system, they're enabling us to do the proper ventilation, they're really helping with energy-efficient sequences, and that's the last step that we're still working on, and we'll be working on that for the next month. And then probably, and then we'll be coming back, as we mentioned a couple times, as changes seasons, because as seasons change, we want to make sure that what was working in the wintertime is now working in the spring or the summertime. Benefits of this guaranteed energy savings process. You get guaranteed energy savings on this. I believe right now it's somewhere around $60,000 a year for the first one on pure energy savings. That's on top of what, what Colin and his team are providing. Also guaranteed learning environment, so we've gone back in the classrooms, we said, hey, we're going to bring the CO2 level down to where it's supposed to be. We're on our second set of readings, we'll have another set of readings, and what we do is we adjust the equipment so that it's bringing in the proper amount of fresh air. No change orders. The school has had no change orders on this project, and won't. Additionally, we have, we offer, we provide a low-cost, transparent pricing process. What that allows you to do is, when we sat down with your team to pick, I think we had about $5 million worth of things identified, and they picked the best ones that fit their needs at this time, they also got to select, and get involved selecting of contractors and equipment, so they had really full say in what they're, what they're selecting. And also, single point of responsibility, no finger pointing, it's our responsibility to take care of it when there are issues. There was no call, there was no getting pulled in the middle. So, next steps. Right now, we're working with your team to finish up the utility rebates, which right now we're looking at $192,000 with the rebates. When we submitted our proposal, we were looking at 162. We, Bill found a nice little adjustment that is increasing it by, I think, 14%, so that's, that's a nice little chunk of change.
Is that through the feds bill, or is that come in?
Yeah, it's D-DCO money.
Yeah.
It'll go. There's some extra money left through February, I believe, right?
February 14.
February 14. Never felt that since then.
It's a sweetheart deal.
I got to get Bill to correct too. It was announced on a Friday, I think it's your brother-in-law that's an electrician?
Cousin.
Cousin? And they talked about it over the weekend, and I'm, I'm not kidding. Monday morning at 7:00, I get a phone call from Bill. Hey, there's a 14% adder! And oh, Bill's going to call you. He's all over it.
So we're in the final stages of that. It's always nice for boards to get checks instead of giving them out all the time. We're completing, we're in the process of completing the project and starting monitoring. And then the third thing I wanted to mention is, is we'd offer to provide a comprehensive facility study focused on three areas. One of them would be to take a look at your buildings from an energy-saving standpoint. What else can be done? You're doing a great job on behavior issues, but you can only do so much when you have certain types of equipment or certain types of controls. The second thing we'd be looking at is learning environment issues, similar to what we did in your, in your first project. And also then, while we're doing that, you look at the age equipment issue. Sometimes you'll have equipment that's 40 years old with a life of 25 years, and you're getting a great life out of it, but at some point, you're going to have to replace it. So, that's what we, we're looking at as possible next steps. That basically concludes my presentation. Any questions from anyone? Yes?
Where did the old light fixtures go? What do you do with the old fixtures?
The lamps and valves were disposed of. You have to actually, there's PCVs in them, so we have our contractor disposed of them, and we have paperwork that we'll provide to the school that basically indicates that they disposed of those in a legal manner. The larger fixtures, we basically took apart and junked the portions that were just like the metal lenses and things like that, so that basically just went to a landfill.
There's lots of planners along the road now that were the old light fixtures.
Are there questions from board members about the status of this project? I think one of the things that was unique, and certainly, Tom, feel free to jump in here, or I'm sorry, Bob, jump in here and confirm this. Usually when Performance Contract or Performance Services comes in, they would evaluate all of our facilities, and, you know, because we took a unique approach to this, we only had the three buildings evaluated. And one of the things that we will be looking forward in the near future, assuming that as, as this project finishes up, is the next steps to start to look at our other facilities. We have some very immediate needs over at Wheaton North South as well, very similar to Wheaton North, with some lighting issues and some very obvious things. And I, one of the things that we want to make sure that we do moving forward is to continue to address these things, because they pay for themselves, and they pay for themselves pretty quickly, especially lighting. Lighting is, is, and then the rebates, that was, that was added, that was an added thing that we weren't even counting in, and it certainly is going to be a nice give-back from the governmental things, because we're doing the right thing to conserve energy. That's the whole point, that's why it's there, coming from the government. So, and Bill, did you want to add anything to that in regard to our next steps or where we may be headed with? Again, we only did three buildings, we only looked at three and where we made these changes, and we're starting to monitor here. And then the key is, is to think about, you know, what about the other 17 buildings? And what's happening? And I know that goes into the bigger facility thing, however, these are all energy-related issues, and that's why we're able to do these things in a very proactive way, and it pays for itself after a few years. So Bill, anything from your side?
I just, you know, decided to kind of share what Mrs. Swanson started with, the, talking about the energy education program and a little bit of skepticism. I, you know, coming into this process, which probably went longer because of my skepticism. Apologies, Mr. Roman. Yeah, I think this, you know, this has worked at Build. We are very excited. I think we do need to look at the entire district, and these folks have been, it's been great to work with them. The contractor, seventh grade, Michael Dewey, who's, now his name is beer tonight, said the lighting contractor is probably the best contractor he's ever worked with in all his years in the district, and he's had a lot of contractors roll through Wheaton North, and it was very seamless to students and staff, and even though a lot of it was getting done in August, there's still, you know, as you know, in our high schools, there's a lot going on even in August, and well, getting stuff done before school started, and the issues that the staff had to deal with were very minimal. So, there is, Wheaton North South is definitely a need, they've got the same type of lighting fixtures that we just took out of Wheaton North that need to go. These jockey boilers are, as you saw, the size of them are incredible. I remember we built the new hovel before that we put in there, were very small, these are even smaller than those. The fact that they can run the buildings, we don't have to turn the big boilers on until, I think we get to about, what, 20 degrees or so, I would say, 20, 25 degrees, you just, you know, goes to show, you know, the value there, and are excited about that, and then just providing the, you know, the relief, exhaust relief in the buildings and bringing those CO2 levels down. You know, it's very exciting stuff, and it's been a very seamless process. So, I think our next step is, we look at our, you know, overall facility plan, is kind of merge that along with these folks and look at the bigger picture for the entire school district.
Yeah, Bill should not apologize for the skepticism, because it was shared, as you may remember, when we began looking at performance contracts. Legislation passed by the General Assembly in the mid-to-late 1990s allowed municipalities and school districts to look at performance contracts as an option to institute or implement energy savings programs, controls, equipment, and upgrades in the facilities outside of the normal RFP process. And, so we were somewhat skeptical. I'm delighted to see that this has been performed on time, that the working relationship was positive, that you're coming in on budget, and the idea that we have one source and on one person, that we need to point a fingertip for a problem, or certain benefits, and we'll justify a look at further work here, see if it's still right for, for us to do that. If we had had problems, it would have made that second look unnecessary, I think, so the fact that we have, in essence, more work to do as ourselves, as a board, to look at this as an alternative for our facilities, I think is a great benefit.
I also was a skeptic at first, and thought, we just do it ourself, but I've been very impressed and totally get it that it's, it's nice to have an expertise in things, and we can't be an expert at everything at every level, and we're really here to educate children. So, I've been very impressed and look forward to the savings we get in the future.
I'm just happy that our kids can now be more alert in the classroom, the reduced CO2 level. I mean, you don't think about things like that as, you know, you just, you just kind of think that every classroom is normal, and kids should be learning, and it's all going fine, and then when you dig into it and you see that, that, you know, your CO2 level isn't what it should be, kids should fall asleep probably, and so it'll be interesting to see how, how well the kids in those classrooms perform now that they have added that ventilation.
I think that's a huge component of this, is to get that environment appropriate, and as I said, we're going to, that's going to be the measurement piece over the next several months here. We'll come back in the springtime and really be able to measure in and see where the differences are. We'll also be able to start to measure through the winter here, you know, where some of our cost savings play out with natural gas as well. But the electricity component, the lighting, was instant. I mean, we, it was almost immediate. Get brighter lights and a lower cost, I mean, it's like, you know, it really is something that, you know, is like, no rain, that it makes sense to move forward. The classroom component is a key thing, too. You know, what, what I would suggest, and certainly I'm curious if, whether or not, if there's any concern on behalf of the board, then we do ask Performance Services to go ahead and start to evaluate our other buildings like we did before. Bring it, we, again, we would not do any projects unless it's raw, you know, for board approval, the scope of it, and so on, like we did this past time. But we do need to start to do the assessment component to see what's happening in our other facilities. We have some ideas in South, because we know it's very similar to what, where it was at North. However, some of our other buildings, that's not necessarily the case, and so we need to, we do need to do the evaluation component, which they did upfront before we even awarded the contract, if you remember. So, any questions or concerns about that? That was one of the things that, that Bob mentioned before.
I'm sorry, is there something else? How, how would you, how would you envision we proceed? Would we choose, you know, like, three more buildings and then do those, and...
I would work with Performance Services and our staff to look at all the buildings, and then come back, probably through the facility, capital, facility committee, and prioritize, and then bring it back to the project to scope to the board, and then ask the board to look at it, and obviously, we'd have to come up with funding solutions, and again, I know there's low-hanging fruit out there, especially Wheaton North South, and I'd want to make one quick comment about the CO2 issue, and this was brought up in one of our committee meetings, and it's by John. You have to remember, back in the day, some of these buildings were built during the energy crisis, and, you know, they were built to be very tight and very, you know, so that, you know, getting these types of issues resolved is very important, and so that's, you know, that's some of the source of that, it's not just the equipment necessarily, it's some of the times they're built. It's not just the equipment necessarily, it's some of the times they were built.
You know, one of the things too is assuming that this additional project was moving along appropriately, what we want to do is we don't want to wait too long because then we're up against again, July's not really the time to be, it's, it's much better to be doing it in the springtime to be able to get things in order. So we, you know, everything, that's right, start as soon as school's out and be able to have whatever the scope of the project is to be able to get the work done. And I know, and you're shaking your head.
Well, there were a couple improvement items that you had interest in that we weren't going to be able to get the equipment in for eight to 12 week lead times or so, but we would have either had a classroom or something along those lines.
Which we did choose not to do that because of the timeline we were on, correct? But if we get out in front of this, then we can work like Bill said, well, I'd like, you know, Mr. Farley and staff to work with performance services and take a look at the rest of our buildings. And I do think this is over a period of time here. You know, we're not going to do all 17 of them. We can't, you know, it's just not going to fit. But the long-term relationship piece, I think is what they're interested in and certainly what we're interested in as we continue to move forward. And we could certainly do what we are able to do year by year as we move forward, what we can afford and fund appropriately.
I think if we had the opportunity to do what they did at North with the savings on the light fixtures and still capitalize on that 14% by February 14th. I know it came out at our, at our facilities meeting when we reviewed this, that we don't necessarily have to have the work done, but we have to get the equipment ordered. Was that the right concept?
Enter the contract.
Enter the contract, that's what it is. Enter the contract by the 14th in order to gain that additional 14%. So I guess it would be my, my thought that having seen what's gone on and the seamless installation of all of this to enter into the, I mean, that's the next biggest building we have in our district and the two high schools are. So if we, you know, enter into something where we get that 14% and get moving on that on Wheatmoreville South and then get some evaluation of our others in the interim time period, that would be my, that would be my suggestion.
And that was just the lighting, correct, Mr. Farley?
Yes.
That's right. That's just the light. So that would just be the lighting there, which is, you know, pretty significant. It's an immediate turnaround. So we can certainly look into it and we can bring it back and especially if that 14% is announced here, you know, that's, it seems like the right thing to do. And it's something they work around our schedules and work in the evenings and that type of thing and it really does go well.
I just was going to add that if my kids were here, they'd say, Mom, see, that's why, you know, I struggle with classes with CO2. So I, you know, thought that's really it, but if that, I mean, that concerns me that we really should be looking at that in all of the classrooms.
The learning environment there, study after study on light levels improving, test scores and performance, same thing with CO ventilation, noise, those type of things. Now, will I say now you're going to have a 5% better performance on test scores in those classrooms?
I hold you to it.
Then I'd rather go get tutoring. Well, maybe not me, but anyway.
Well, I think we all know that environment is critical. We don't want it to be a barrier if we can avoid it and we can make some adjustments.
Bob, I just had a question relative to, do you have a sense of where these lines may cross on a chart of savings versus expense as relates to months, years, when these lines cross and we enjoy the savings for the investment?
The pure payback on energy and lighting with the, you know, I didn't check on the incentives, but I think we're looking at about a six or seven year payback on those, which, which is pretty good given your, your return on investment right now is what, on the CD is what, 1%?
No. Bill, talk about that with the lease.
Yeah, that's how we structured the lease. We were right in, the overall project probably was about a 6.2 per year payback. So that's exactly how we structured the lease in that same time period, knowing that we would get initial, that initial funding right upfront from the energy grants.
You know, it's a little premature because we don't know how those surveys are going to come back from the public as to what their priorities are when we're looking at district facilities. But should we find out that the high priority is energy, which wouldn't surprise me, could go either way, I guess my question would be, would we be in a position to be able to tell whether there are projects that would maybe be of interest to consider moving forward with, if there should be a Jefferson referendum? I mean, we asked the public about three different concepts and one of them included our priority one, condition one things.
I think the answer is yes, however, it's always the funding issue. You know, and we do have some different funding options when it does come to energy-related things like this. Like we, we, in this case, you know, we did a line of credit or we borrowed the money and we're paying it back over the life of the savings. So through our regular operating budget. So that's how we did this. We structured it because we know we're getting the guaranteed savings back. We know we're going to have the money instead of paying it to ComEd and to get natural gas into the water, we're paying it, you know, pay down the debt for the, for the project. So that's how we pay for this. So there are a couple other options and, you know, I'll let Mr. Farley talk more specifics. We always have life safety options. We always have other debt capacities that we can look at to how to do some of those projects as long as they pay for themselves back over time. So, you know, that, we'd have to look at those things, you know, depending on the scope of what we might want to do at the other buildings. And even maybe enhance, I know Wheat North, we did eliminate some things that were originally part of the proposal that we might want to come back and say, you know what, we need to finish this out now at North as well. So I don't know that at this point. You know, that's where that decision comes in to where is the best bang for the buck at any given time and trying to make some decisions. So, Bill, anything else on the funding scenarios and how?
No, I just, again, I think we'd like to look at the overall plan they provide for the district. I mean, we obviously have some buildings hobbled along close, some of the newer buildings that probably there's not a lot there. I'd like to, and South is an easy one to continue to cite because I know what's there. But I think we, you know, I'd like to see how the rest of the, you know, the Edisons and some of the other buildings shake out and see what the scope looks like, see how that matches up with our plan, capital development plan. And then also just, you know, talk about the funding options when we realize what the scope is on that. And we do have, you know, through our service extension base, could do something. We could also do similar that we did with this project for funding and need to look for other unique ways to do it and done. But excited to move forward here and see what the rest of the district holds.
So when would a, if you went ahead and did a overall, you know, look at our, when would that be done?
Well, we could start on that shortly. 17 buildings, I'd like to say, you know, we probably have about five school districts that have 20 buildings or so that we've done this for. So we have kind of a template that we're looking at. I know we have it done before the end of the year. And then if there are specific targets like the rebates for the lighting utilities, we could take a look at that on buildings. I would suggest more than just Wheat South High School, any of them where you have those opportunities that are of size, you may want to take a look at that because the payback on those with the rebates are pretty good. They're going to be better than the seven years. Like with that rebate, I bet you're down to five years or so.
Less, it's about three and a half.
It's a three and a half.
See, with that rebate, our payback time is going to be less than what we have been projected because we're getting the cash coming back. So that's why there's an opportunity there. You know, it would be wise to seek it out and get that government money when we can.
So am I hearing that the lighting would be like a top priority or the most urgent?
What's your, it depends on your priority. I mean, I have schools that say, okay, you know, we want energy savings, but the learning environment is my most pressing, I want you to go into classrooms and take a look at that and come back with that. What we're looking at were the three. When we go into a building, we're looking at energy savings, the lighting's one piece of that, then the learning environment, then we also take a look at the aged equipment. The last thing you want me to do is be able to go into a building, say, okay, we just finished this and then your chiller blows up because it's 40 years old and you're like, why didn't you take care of that? And I'm like, well, you didn't tell me. No, you know, and then, so we'll give you that information on all three and then it's your decision on what your priorities are. We'll help you with each piece and say, this is important under the energy savings and this is important from a learning or a top priority or an issue on each one of those.
I think this, in a big picture, this is why it's so important to not wait and then do big capital, if we can stay up in front of this and maintain these facilities out over time like this in a conservative way like this or conservation way, it's so important because it'll, it just provides that better environment and then we, that will fit into some of that, the piece of our capital development plan and how we move forward over the next several years.
If I can, at Penn Harris Madison, which is a, I read on broad, they have 20 buildings and they're in, they're in Mishawaka by Notre Dame. We're on project eight there and they do these $2 million chunks once or twice a year and that's how they're doing it versus trying to, you know, swallow the whole thing at once. And I have a couple other schools that have taken a similar philosophy towards that. And we have this priority list and then the board facility thinks, okay, this is what we want to focus on. Now, the initial part was energy, but then it became learning environment and now the last couple have been, okay, we got to, we got to address these aged equipment before they fail right in the middle, you know, boiler fail right in the middle of winter. But our job is to give you the information and have you make that decision.
Can I take it there's no cost for the?
That's correct.
Right. So is the board in agreement to tell them, proceed ahead and take a look at our buildings and come back to us with the information?
Any concerns about that, about doing the evaluation? That's what we did, you know, previously before moving forward. Okay. And what we'll do once we do that, we'll probably bring it back up through the facilities committee, okay, like Bill had mentioned that. And then we'll certainly vet some of that out and finance as well, you know, how we're going to pay for it. So and then bring it back to the board as soon as, you know, wherever it's appropriate. Okay?
Sounds, sounds good.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Bob.
And it's been great working with the team. You really have an outstanding team out there, Bill. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, shift gears a little bit away from energy. So the first two topics here was just to share that comprehensive look and it is very interesting how we can take those two aspects of that and continue to move things forward in a strategic fashion with our facilities. Now we're going to look at some cohorts, some numbers of kids and any good facility studies, you don't want to be making facility changes and adjustments with blind information when it comes to data. And so it is time for us, and I know the board's well aware of this, is to update our enrollment projections to be able to make sure that the size and the scope of our facilities are appropriate moving forward. I'm going to turn over to Bill again and let him talk through some of the pieces of information we have here. We did talk about this in the facilities committee a little bit as well and we'll run through some information about our previous studies and where we may be headed moving forward.
Thank you, Dr. Harris. What I'm going to do is pass around, I was front of some killing trees, but this is the last demographic study that was done by Dr. Casarla back in 2008. I'm also going to pass around a timeline of the. Just wanted to give you the timeline of the process that we've used for Dr. Casarla. It actually dates back to the fall of 1997. Before that, I think we used Dr. Glass, who was out of Northern Illinois for demographic studies. This hand piece of paper here, I went back into old board books and kind of took a trip down memory lane saying, oh, I remember that meeting. And we looked at, we looked through all of these to kind of give a timeline of what, where we've been with Dr. Casarla. And back in the fall of 1997, when we first contracted with him for a full narrative report for the school district, in September of 99, we updated those tables. We just asked for a brief update of the enrollment tables. February 2002, if you recall, we were in the throes of the high school referendum question and the overcrowding that was going on. I saw the board report that was there as well for the mobile classrooms when we were purchasing those and getting those purchased right away. Saw something in the minutes of Mr. Davis saying, we've got to do this now. And he was, boy, he was right because we were bursting at the seams, if you recall back then. But in 2002, the district asked Dr. Casarla to update the high school projections at that time so we could have that information. In 2004, the district again used Dr. Casarla, we did, updated the elementary enrollments for five years, which, and the high school and middle, or excuse me, the middle schools for 10 years. So we had, you know, he was focusing in on that next five years at the elementary level. In 2008, which is the report you have in front of you, that was the end of the five year cycle for the elementaries. If you kind of, if you notice, there is a kind of a theme here as far as what the costs are being. He's kept his numbers pretty flat depending on exactly what you're asking for. I believe the board has copies, but I'll pass out those two of his most recent proposal. Contacted him. Obviously, we could talk to him about pricing depending on what direction the board wants to go. His figure, or dollar amount is the same, which is about what we thought would be 12 eight for the update of the full demographic study. He also, for a thousand dollars less, will just update the tables, but I think for the, it's probably worth the value to, especially with some things coming online here in the community to probably have to do the full demographic study. So this is the proposal that, again, we received from Dr. Casarla. I believe a question was also asked by the board and I'll pass that around as to where the, again, where our enrollment projections fall in comparison to his most recent demographic study. For, as a reminder for the board, Dr. Casarla puts, like any demographer, gives himself some leeway. He does three different studies, there are table A, and table B, and table C. A is probably on the low side of what he expects. And again, this, this book is very thick. I won't go into every line or detail of it, but he does an A, B, and C projection. The A is what he's anticipating on the low side. The B is kind of the mid-range, what he anticipates. And the C is probably the, I wouldn't call it the worst case scenario, but the, obviously the highest enrollment that we could possibly see. If you look, what we've given you today is his 2008 projections, early child, I almost said pre-K, early childhood through high school. You can see, you know, I broke it out by building and you can see on the left, that's our fall enrollment numbers, current fall enrollment numbers versus the A, B, and C projections that he did back in 2008. Dr. Harris and I went back and forth whether he's a B plus or a B minus. He's somewhere between a B and a C on most of it, most of the schools, if you take a look at it. This was done about the time the Lowell redistricting was done and was taken into account in this report. The Franklin, most recent Franklin move is, obviously wasn't taken into account in these numbers because that, this report was done prior to that, obviously, but this, so that if you look at those numbers as well, that may be something to note, you can see where they're at. But this is basically, I believe one of the board members asked for how it was shaken out here at the end of five years. So we are, you know, with the elementary report kind of coming to the end of its cycle, he does provide numbers beyond the five years, but the five years is kind of where he believes it is. He also does a study that does, is kind of a more district as a whole. I think this is probably the better projection for us to look at as we talk about individual schools and what we're anticipating. So this is the information, I think, I'm sure the whole board is interested in looking at as well. But the proposal he has given, I had preliminary conversations with him, he's provided it. It's very similar to previous year's studies as well and costs have pretty much stayed the same. He also, in his proposal offers, he will come out for a set price, which is the same set price he had 15 years ago plus his travel costs. So I don't believe the board's ever chosen to do that, but the report is well presented and, you know, easy to understand for the most part. So give this to you tonight for discussion.
Couple things I want to point out too, and Bill did a nice job of summarizing here to some key points looking at this. On the yellow sheet that has the current information, a couple points I want to make out, in the middle school enrollment, we made, as the board knows, a boundary adjustment last spring at Franklin. So those 35 to 40 kids shifted. So this current enrollment, that 771 students, that would have been approximately 810 if we wouldn't have made that change, okay? Just so you're aware, so we, but we made that, and we remember we moved one grade level, so really it's only one group of kids and each year we're going to phase it in over the three years. So I just want to point that out, you know, that that's because we made an adjustment. And he made these projections based on the existing boundaries that were established in 2007. So we did, that was the only place where there was a little bit of a mix. So we did, that was the only place where there was a little bit of a miss. And then we talked all around that last spring, if you remember well, to get to where we got to be able to make that adjustment. So, and then Monroe, actually, was, this includes the kids that are at Monroe because of that shift. So it would've been 40 kids less at Monroe if we wouldn't have made that adjustment. And again, you can see where that would've fell at. So it's just interesting to see what we had to do. We know that trend was gonna continue over the next couple of years. So that was really the only thing that was starting to get a little far out. And five years is, and even, he even says that in the report, you know, that he's confident up to about five, to five years. After that, there's too many factors that start playing into it, and there's not a lot of confidence. And that's why it is important, if we're gonna have accurate data, and we're gonna be making some longer-term decisions about facilities, it is important to have this updated information moving forward. So I just wanted to point those couple of things out.
I missed, what's the difference between A, B, C?
I mean, well.
B is kind of the target. He really thinks B is. Yeah. B is where he thinks it's gonna fall. Hold up. Any good demographer's always gonna give you a leeway here, you know? Aggressive growth is usually one, and, and then other, you know, factors that might play into it, would we have a decline in enrollment? B's the target. Correct?
What's the explanation for Hubble? He projected at the high point for Hubble, it's 778, and it's really 87.
I think it coincides with Lincoln. Look at Lincoln up in the elementary. It's Denali East. There's, there's probably a few more kids in there than what he anticipated. That, if you look there.
Lincoln goes Edison.
Oh, is it Edison? Okay. There's somewhere else.
They east, they go to Weasbrooke, and they go to Hubble.
All right, Weasbrooke. Was it, I forget, I was looking at that. Some other factor, too, with Hubble.
I think Hubble houses a lot of special ed programs that probably were moved there when the F buildings built.
You are right, we do have some other kids there. Some district-wide programs, those may not have been included there.
Maybe they're not.
There was a couple of other things, too. Bill, do you recall what it was? I didn't look, I didn't dig into Hubble's as much. I was looking more at Monroe and Franklin as I did last spring.
I think, well, I think it's why it's important to look at it. I, you know, Warrenville has had some growth in families in the community. There's been some differences in, I think, some movements from West Chicago and some other things that may have prompted that number to go up. And that may be something that, in the five years, has changed.
We got a question on the ELL part of this proposal. What about special needs in addition to ELL, demographic trends, anything like that?
You know, special education's kind of, I have never seen a demographic, a demography report that actually identified that because it's, it's hard to identify. You know, it is very hard, especially at elementary. Now, we can identify that moving forward. When we get into middle school and high school, we have a real clear idea of where our needs are. But at elementary, you just don't know. It's so, it's so much of an unknown to how, what, where the identification rate is. There is a piece in here with ELL, and I will comment on it. He did suggest, because he knows in this area, the ELL trends are a huge factor. I did talk to Faith about this, she's not here this evening, and she believes we've got a real good handle on that right now and doesn't believe that's necessary. She, she said they believe they've got a real community connection in different parts of the district and do know what's there. Certainly, it wishes the board, if you wanted to do that, that's an additional cost to do that additional report. She did not believe that it was necessary at this point to, to add here. Can we do it? Sure. Would it be, any additional information is always helpful. However, you know, we have made some changes in our programming over the last couple of years, and, and we have really made a concentrated effort through our, through our program, into the community pieces, and do have quite a good handle on what's going on with our ELL population. That's why she said she didn't believe it was necessary. Did you talk with her as well? Or, I know I did. I did, okay. And that's what she indicated to me. Because I was concerned about that, because it is a change over the past several years. But, but your original question, you know, Andy, about special ed, it's, it's such a hard thing to identify through it. You know, with the way they go about this, they look at birth rates, and they go to the hospitals in the county, and, you know, they look at, at real estate trends, and they look at all kinds of things. And that's not really a factor that's easily obtained. Plus, the FERPA writes all plenty into this, you know, and that information's not available in the public. You know, we can't provide it, and there's no place else that you can really get it from.
Realizing this is not an exact science, obviously, but is there anywhere generally accepted practice where it's a plus or minus error factor? Is it 1%, 5%? I mean, does anyone know that? Question one. And question two, as staff, making decisions, are these numbers good enough for you to make decisions? Because there's a lot of misses here. Granted, over a four-year period, but there's some 20%, 30% deltas, which it.
It depends on the size of the building, for instance. I mean, in an elementary building, if it's, you know, if it's a 20-kid miss, that's scattered over six grade levels, that's not a big deal. Okay? Now, one other thing that happened in this timeframe is we changed our class sizes. You know, our class sizes went up. When we got into the budget scenario four years ago, we, we raised our class sizes. And so, you know, there were some factors that played in. And when you start looking at classrooms, especially at the elementary level, that's a huge issue. Middle school and high school, it's not as much of an issue because you're looking more at room utilization, and those class sizes vary. But elementary, it's more cookie cutter, and you, you know, you know, 24, 20, or 26, 28, 30 kids, that's the class sizes we've been using now for the last several years. So that was another intangible that played into this. So Jim, I think to answer your question, it depends on the size of the building and the grade levels. Middle school, again, you can absorb some of that difference just by the, the way you set the schedule, and you can blend it. High school's the same way. You know, you can, you can work within a schedule and your room utilization, you know, you could, to deal with some of those differences. Is there a number, does he actually list something in there, Bill, from a demographer's point of view?
Yeah, I was just gonna comment that, you know, while we're at the end of the five years, he recommends that you update this every three years, and that's another factor. I mean, it's, I think his, you know, his last, or first line of his conclusion is no demographer has a crystal ball. So I mean, it's, but I guess to a percentage, I don't recall seeing an exact percentage that he gives as a leeway in any building, so.
I, I'm familiar with John Casarla. We worked with him in my previous district, and actually, my previous two districts, actually. So he is, he's the top dog with this stuff, especially the school district. He, you know, he actually lives in North Carolina. He used to be here in Northern Illinois, and he's relocated. But he is very tight with, and able to get to these access points, and, and does this work for a lot of districts around us. And so I would say you're not gonna find a better person that really understands trends and what's going on in DuPage County, you know, in our given community, to be able to give us good information. You know, we have, I feel good about what he shares here, is what I'm saying. I think our decision point is always trying to determine, do we look at A, B, or C? And we're a lot more aware of what's going on with our real estate, with our community development, to determine, you know, where we make decisions. You know, some boards in other communities get in trouble when they think there's aggressive growth, and then the market fell out from underneath it. And guess what? They build buildings and they never open them because the market just clammed up. And so therefore, then, you know, you look at these, they were building buildings based on aggressive growth. And so, you know, we're a more stable district, so it's a little easier for us to hit that middle target. And you can see, that's where we fell here, pretty much, in the middle range.
Maybe to Jim's question, the actuaries that we use for our projections of insurance losses, they have a confidence level in range. Maybe, Bill, you can see this, or something in the demographers' association. There's gotta be something that they use as a plus or minus, as Jim's going to.
I think in total, he's within 3% in, in five years' time. So that's probably, I don't know if that'll win you the presidential election. Plus or minus 3%, he's pretty, he's pretty close. And, you know, like now, when you break it down into the buildings, it, you know, and he does give another, if you go when you, when you can't sleep tonight and you're going through this, you can look at, he does kind of a district as a whole type of approach as well, and gets a different set of ranges. But he is within, you know, just under 3% here, I think, in total, so.
It's an art of science. It's like the amount of, yeah, the actuaries use, they can, they can project something much more accurately from the district as a whole than they can for every individual in the school, or particularly for a classroom. It's more granular, that's harder to do when you do.
And then going to Colin's example about, you know, the iPhone or the iPad or whatever, just think about what's happened in the community in the last five years and in the country. I mean, there may be some factors in there that have maybe skewed the numbers a bit.
I think, too, when you look back at the work he did, and Bill gave you a timeline here of the work that was done, for instance, like back in '02. You know, we built those buildings based on his numbers that he gave this board in, back in 2002. And those high schools were designed, and guess what? Were spot-on. I mean, they're built appropriate. Were, were staffed appropriately, they're, they are. So I think his work, you know, because we've had it for 15 years, you know, the decisions you've made as a, as a board over that period of time have been good decisions, you know, on, on some of those facility choices. And I think as we look forward, I think we have, you know, he, he does provide us information so we can make good choices on our classrooms and classroom space. So that's all I can point it to, is that, you know, we're not sitting with empty buildings, we're not sitting with tight buildings, other than a couple little, I already mentioned that, where we had one issue that was unpredictable to some degree.
So, so I think that the answer to maybe Jim's question is, you're, you're saying that it is of material benefit to you to have these numbers, that it helps you that way? And you don't know of any other demographer that are, is being used by other school districts that you think, hmm, maybe that's a little better?
I am aware of a couple others. I would recommend Dr. Casarla. I, there are others. I'm not gonna say there's not. I do believe the reason why he, this board has used this for a long period of time, because it's the best one out there. And it's the one that is the most reliable and accurate. So that's my recommendation. I don't know, Bill, have you worked with other demographers?
No, just Dr. Casarla. I would, you know, I think, a couple of things. He does have the history, so there are some benefits there. There may be some catch-up costs with a new demographer to look at that. I mean, you know, he does, you know, some of the factors he looked at, you know, fertility rates and all types of different things. I mean, back in the, you know, one of the things that taught me back when I went to business manager school years ago, is you, the way they used to do this was they'd go to the local hospital, see how many children were born. You'd do that cohort survival method of how, how many kids. I mean, it was done very simplistically back in the day, and it was, again, it was a very different world at the time when, when there wasn't a lot of transiguancy with folks moving in and out in communities, where it's small and, you know.
Boy.
Yeah.
It's a metric, that.
Yeah. So there, yeah, I mean, it used to be a kind of a, one of the business managers' tool or responsibility was to go to the hospitals and figure out how many kids were coming. So, you know, the cohort survival method. I mean, I remember learning about it, but it's crystal wise, I'd.
We'll check on the poll.
Erica? They'd call.
Erica?
They'd call.
It's very strange. It's not twins, either. Got it. Weasbrooke, got it. So anyway, I, my recommendation in, in here, Dr. Harris is, and I think we've got, he's got the history, he's worked in the community, worked, because he does go to the cities and to other areas to get, to find out about what's going on development-wise. So I think, you know, we couldn't, are there others? Absolutely. But I think there's some, some good value here with Dr. Casarla.
You know, and I know another target of the board is to have, you know, a enrollment and a projection that's solid, so we don't get any surprises. Trust me, as superintendent, I don't want any surprises even. This is a piece of that information that is critical to make sure that there is no surprises, and that we don't miss something coming. And I don't want that. And so that, this information is important as we continue to make decisions on our facilities and our size and scope, and even programming, too. Now, somebody asked me the other day, for instance, you know, would you ever consider doing an all-day kindergarten, just make that our program? Well, right now, we don't have the space to do it. So, you know, that's where, now, if we got to a point where we started looking at demographic numbers and we started estimating, you know, our kindergarten numbers are gonna dwindle, well, you know what, then? Then we might think about it, because we don't want the buildings sitting empty, we don't want, so then we say, you know what? We're gonna have kindergarten space. And we should do all-day kindergarten across the board. But to build additional space to do it, that's a whole different deal, as, as everyone knows. But that's where this study can play into this, if we do see a trend where we have additional space. We are able to do the tuition-based all-day right now because we do have room in, in majority of our buildings. And it's a good use of that space, and we haven't had to add space to do it. So that's, that's an example of something where, when you do have this data, you can make program decisions as well that impact student learn.
So would the idea here be to bring this forward to us at what meeting? Or have you run it through the appropriate committee, whether that be facilities or education facilities, I guess, is where it comes from?
We got, I said, we, after, we did not have this when we met, so this is the first time everybody's seen it. Yeah, they have the book. They did not have the, and I'm sure you both read it cover to cover. Remember I.
Okay. What was the first question? Two more.
But, you know, with the board's consent here, I mean, we can move forward on this because it, you know, it doesn't require board approval. We can certainly put it on consent. You know, it's 12,800 is what we would recommend here on this. It's what we budget for, it's in the budget.
It's in the budget.
Because we knew where it was gonna be. It doesn't require, you know, it's not a contract, it meets that threshold. But I wanna make sure the board's comfortable with this study. Then we will bring it back in the springtime after we get it, and as we continue our facility discussion at that point, you know, and moving forward, and look at our enrollments down the road.
Well, as I recall, we did have a discussion about this when we were setting goals for the year. So it's not as though this is something that we need to, you know, rehash again in terms of should we or should we not do it? I mean, I think, I think we, we decided back then when we put it in the goals that we wanted this information, and we felt it was time to have an updated study because these numbers are old and, and because they're old, that's why we see the differences in the individual school.
I think it's something we absolutely need to consider and do while we're contemplating what we do about Jefferson. Interestingly, he projected higher enrollment at Jefferson for our challenge students than we're actually encountering right now. I'd like to see what he thinks about that, maybe he can rectify this so we know that if we proceed with the Jefferson offer, and then we're proposing a building that will actually meet the needs that we project for the next 15 years or whatever.
Let me clarify that Jefferson number. That 178 there, that's as of last week, or, or you went today?
Oh, so we have the rolling.
We have the rolling enrollment. So remember that. So if we did this in May, that number, actually, this number last year at Jefferson, at this exact time, I've got it here in my folder, was 144, right? 14, is that what it was?
142, something like that.
Yeah. So we're up 30 kids from this point last year.
So his number would be at the end of the school year or at the high point?
Total enrollment.
I don't think that's the tuition.
No.
No, he's already, he footnotes that.
Oh, does he? Okay.
It does not include tuition students. So remember now, we were, so we, you know, this, you know, two months from now, we're gonna be at 220 probably, you know, with enrollment there. And so that, that's why, and we were up above that, where we were 289 last year.
But 289 included tuition-based students.
Well, that one, because that backed out those, that doesn't include the 59 kids we had at the satellite program. So it was right around 280, approximately.
For our challenge.
So it actually, you know, he was low. He was low here when we look at our total situation.
That even means it's more meaningful to have some demographic information, so where our school is proposed, if we proceed with it, is based upon some legitimate projections.
And I would, I would under, well, I would imagine there should be some information available about, in a general population, I mean, this is, the percentage of kids who have identified need is just growing in general.
That information is out there, actually, with our, with our unique, with the children that are attending Jefferson because through Easter Seals and, and the hospitals and so on. But the needs of them, though, when you get into what the scope of the needs are, aren't there. You know, and that's the unpredictable part. Now, we would have some number, and this number's not going down. And it's definitely on the upside.
So, are we all in agreement to just move, move forward? Any concerns about doing that? Nope? Sounds like you got a pretty high... Good.
That's all I had in regard to that. And anything else, Mr. Farley? For the good of the cause of the, okay, any of these topics? That concludes the staff's part tonight, unless there's any other questions.
Perfect. This was a very informative night, and thank you very much for it. And are there any public comments? Nope? Announcement?
I'm just curious what brought the students in.
Me too.
Civics class is on.
Oh, wow.
Government class guy?
Government.
AP government. I hope you learned something this evening.
Fascinated.
We're talking about Wheaton North here tonight, so.
Congratulations.
Good to see you.
Thanks for coming out.
Thanks for coming out.
Thank you for having us.
This was a dumb, boring meeting compared to some of them. Right, Jim?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. Go see how those classrooms feel and smell to you.
Now you guys are gonna pay attention to that, right?
Don't fall asleep anymore.
I, with that, then, I would look for a motion to adjourn. Moved by Andy? Seconded by Jim. All in favor, say aye. Aye, and opposed, nay? We are adjourned. Thank you.